Good morning and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We are starting the meeting at nine oh three A M. At this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councilors? Seeing none. Anything from administration?
Thank you, your worship. Administration has one item to add. It is a in-camera item under eleven point one. And it's under for foip section twenty-three, one B, land matter.
Thank you for that. Did everyone at home or in the wilderness get that? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to to adopt the agenda as amended. Thank you. We've got a motion on the floor, all in favor. And the bear behind you has put his paw up, Council Montgomery, so he's in too. We have no presentations and we do have one delegation, four point one Sustainability Committee. And we are honored and excited to have Mister Rob Perry, who wears quite a few hats in our community. But he's here to represent and speak about the Sustainability Committee. Good morning, Mister Perry, and welcome.
Good morning. And if Jeff Persons is there, howdy. I am appearing here on behalf of Council Sustainability Committee. One of the many issues discussed by our committee throughout this year were the town's wetlands south of Gray Park. As you know, this is part of the town's storm water system. Last summer, council opened a bridge across the canal to the wetlands and called it Tom Sadler Bridge. Council named the bridge after Tom for his work in identifying and preserving the wetlands. Our committee was concerned about the lack of understanding of the wetlands by residents and noted that some residents were calling for more pathways in the wetlands and some for sand around the large body of water. These comments were noted on social media. We, as a committee, did not feel we had expertise about wetlands, but we knew of a local organization did that did. That organization is Ducks Unlimited. We reached out to Ducks Unlimited and began working with Derek Holgrinson, a Conservation Program Specialist. It was agreed that Ducks Unlimited would partner with the town to provide information for at least three signs. One regarding the importance of wetlands, one regarding the purpose of wetlands, and one identifying various species found in this particular wetland. This could be two signs, depending on the amount of funds and the number of species. As you know, I often talk to the Chair of Communities in Bloom. Okay, I'm the Chair of Communities in Bloom. In May, our committee discussed the signs proposed by Ducks Unlimited. From the Communities in Bloom perspective, this is an outstanding proposal. It obviously fulfills the education piece for environmental action, one of the pillars of Communities in Bloom. But just as important and perhaps more important from the perspective of Strathmore, it fulfills the education component for the natural heritage promotion, part of heritage conservation, another pillar of Communities in Bloom. The Communities in Bloom Committee voted to allocate fifteen hundred dollars towards the making and the installation of signs, three or four, once again, dependent upon funds and species identification. I'm here today to seek permission from council to pursue this project on behalf of the Sustainability Committee. And I'm asking for five hundred dollars from the committee funds to be moved to be put towards the project. The exact location of the signs will be determined by consulting with Ducks Unlimited, but more importantly, with the Parks and Operations staff. Parks and Operations staff are aware of and supportive of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Perry. Any questions for for Rob as far as the concept being brought to us this morning? Or comments, I guess? Seeing none, is someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Corvial?
Oh, I would move, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, move, give me to, can I make a comment first? Is that, is that, that's where I was gonna go first, anyway?
Sure.
I, yeah, I, I really support this motion. I think that this is a very key education piece in the community and like for the for the Gray's Park, for, you know, even other parks moving forward. And I would fully support this. I'm really grateful for this suggestion and I I look forward to reading and seeing the signs. I do not have the motion in front of me. I would have to flip.
That's okay, Counselor Sobel?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can make that motion, but I would like to, well, I'll make the motion first and then I'd like to make a comment, your worship. I move that council authorize a Sustainability Committee on behalf of council to coordinate with the Ducks Unlimited, with Ducks Unlimited, rather, to provide educational signage on Strathmore's wetlands. And that council authorize the use of five hundred dollars from the Council Committee two thousand and twenty-one budget for signage for this initiative. And if I could just make a a comment, your worship.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you. Rob, thank you for for attending, first of all, and and for all the work you do in our community on a number of of different fronts. This is, as as Counselor Corvial just mentioned, this is a great, I think, a great project. It's something that's needed. And 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 I think we've we've had discussions amongst in council in regards to furthering the educational concept in in Gray's Park. So this is, this is very timely. I guess just, I I guess I have a question to you, Rob, with your involvement with this project. There has been some discussion of of paving that pathway from from Thomas to to eight seventeen. Do you have any comments in regards to that? I, it's it's not a project that that is on the books right now, but it is certainly one that has been had some discussion in regards specifically to opening that up to other individuals in the in the community, persons who are wheelchair bound and and carriages, et cetera. Any any comment? And my my concern is always with the effect it would have on the on the on the area.
I think that would certainly be something that I would urge council to look towards, perhaps more of an expert, like Ducks Unlimited. I personally, I would think that'd be a bit of a concern. It is an environmental reserve and, of course, a wetland. And I'm not sure pavement and pathways actually go that well through those areas. So, yeah, I would definitely be concerned about that. But I'm no expert, I'm just expressing an opinion. So I would urge perhaps looking to someone like Ducks Unlimited to see if that's possible. Perhaps an entryway up towards Gray Park might be more beneficial. Paving the pathway there might be allowing more access for wheelchairs, et cetera, might be something to consider. Yeah, thanks, appreciate that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Any other discussion comments? Oh, sorry, Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, worship, and I really appreciate the work that you've done, Rob, and 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 the work that's been done by Communities in Bloom and Ducks Unlimited. I guess I was wondering if any consideration was given to putting in the signage and and carrying out this project in accordance with the plans that that are on the books for for this area. There was a a plan for a boardwalk that that was developed by the town, a boardwalk across the the wetland. And I remember in the consultation talks around this years ago with with, and Tom Sadler was involved within those talks with town staff around. Tom always has said that this is not a true wetland, but that it is a an environmental reserve and it is a really sensitive ecological area. But he's also said it would be the very best place in the world to teach people about wetland. And putting that boardwalk across would be a a major accomplishment. So I was wondering if this project was in any way linked to that to that that long-term plan?
Not from my perspective, but I would assume operations might be aware of that plan. And so the placement of the signs, I think that would be something we would certainly discuss about it. I mean, I've heard about the boardwalk, but I wasn't sure where it was going or what the proposed, excuse me, plan was for that. But yes, yeah, so I guess that's why we would talk to operations and and the Ducks Unlimited as to where they actually should go.
Thank you, really appreciate the work.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. And just before I call the question, I have a question for administration and possibly engineering at the back. I've had some questions, and I know we've had a great deal of heat in the last month. I've had a question about why that wetland water is so low. And I'm just wondering, does the does the lack of proper drainage of Strathmore Lake have anything to do with the water level at this Gray's Park? I know with Strathmore Lake, we have difficulty having the outflow, and we're doing work on the outflow this summer.
Your worship, thank you. Strathmore Lakes does ultimately feed what we call Pond One, but the the area south of Gray's Park. So, yes, with Strathmore Lakes not draining properly, the lower levels in that lake are somewhat affected.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor, and I'll call the question, I'll call the motion, all in favor. And the motion is carried. Thank you, Mister Perry, for coming before us today, and thank you again for all the hard work you do in our town.
You're most welcome. Enjoy your meeting.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the confirmation of minutes, five point one, adoption of the June ninth, two thousand and twenty-one Committee of the Whole meeting minutes.
I can move those.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. We have a motion on the floor to adopt those minutes. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. And the motion is carried. And now we need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. We don't have any unfinished business, we have no tabled items. So a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Counselor Corvial?
So move.
Thank you, we have a motion to go into Committee of the Whole at nine fourteen, all in favor. And the motion is carried. And that brings us to item eight point one, the ranch's phase five second public access. Ranch Gate to Park Lane Drive. Mister Chuck Proctor is speaking on this.
Good morning, your worship, members of council. I just want to make sure that the councilors at home can see the can see the screen here, my presentation. Can everybody see at home?
No.
All right, well, there is a, there is a hard copy of my presentation included in in everybody's package. So I'll go ahead and get started today. So today, we're talking about an area in in the ranch subdivision. It has to do with a very technical topic of a second public access in in the ranch. And I'm here today not just speaking on behalf of Development Services, I'm also speaking on behalf of the Strathmore Fire Department and the Strathmore Infrastructure Engineering Department as well. We have two members, Bass and Ethan, in the in the audience here, and and all staff are are kind of in agreement with my presentation today and what we're gonna talk about. So just following along in the PowerPoint presentation, I'm gonna go over a brief introduction. I'm gonna talk about the subdivision process at a glance. I'm gonna talk about the responses that we've received so far. I'm gonna talk about our position on the secondary, second public access so far, and then we're gonna open it up to a discussion with council. So just a, just a quick note about Development Services, our duty, we're facilitators, we're technical experts, we're file managers. I think I can speak on behalf of my department, you know, our our least favorite aspect of our of our jobs is making people unhappy. But, you know, we have a duty as as development authority to 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 review these rules and regulations and make decisions. The topic today deals with safety access and emergency response requirements for a new subdivision in town, and that's the ranch, the ranch phase five. The ranch phase five also serves two future subdivisions, the ranch phase five B and the ranch phase seven. At full buildout, we anticipate approximately two hundred and twenty homes, five hundred and seventy-two residents. So those numbers are on the, in your presentation there, say, two two five, five eighty-five. Just a quick correction on those two numbers, it's two hundred and twenty homes, five hundred and seventy-two residents. Just wanted to give an image of of kind of the area that we're that we're talking about here. We're moving on to the the map, the first map in your package in this presentation. And the area that we're mainly talking about is is the area in red. You'll see it's bounded by George Freeman Trail on the east, Highway one, way down south there. Center Street and Park Lane Drive are the west and north boundary roads there. You'll notice that, you know, when the ranch is mostly all built out there, you know, it's a mix of mix of housing down there. And then, you know, south of the ranch is our Walmart commercial area. So that that's kind of the area that we're talking about today, specifically the one outlined in red. Moving on to the next map in your your package with the road labels there, just to give, you know, a little bit more context of a little bit more zoomed-in version of it. So you'll see Ranch Close and Ranch Garden there are labeled, and these are existing today. There's approximately ninety-two households existing today that folks are living there. These houses are built, everything's done in those two little cul-de-sacs. And then the the area in red is the ranch phase five, five B and seven. And it's approximately home to a hundred and twenty-eight households or around three hundred and thirty-three people. The the area in red has not been built yet. They've applied for subdivision this year for for a portion of that area in red. So just the subdivision process at a glance, Anthem United is is one of Strathmore's professional developers. They've applied for the the next phase of of subdivision and land use. Town administration is usually the approving authority, and we we circulate to other technical experts, including other departments, and ask for their comments. The planners aren't, you know, the file, the planners aren't, you know, the the technical guys for everything, the subject matter experts for everything. We circulate to the fire department, we circulate to the infrastructure engineering group. And this is, this is how we do applications in Strathmore, and it's similar to how they do it in Calgary, but just at a smaller scale. Part of the subdivision process involves circulating to public agencies, public utilities, adjacent landowners, as per the Municipal Government Act and the Subdivision Development Regulation. Just switching to the tentative plan for the ranch phase five I've included in your package, it's that kind of technical drawing here. So this is kind of what a what a subdivision looks like. This is the the drawing that we receive. We also receive a big rolled-up set of civil engineering drawings, but this is kind of the tentative plan or the 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 plan for this phase right now. So this hasn't been approved or anything, we're just in the circulation process, and that's kind of what it what it looks like. You'll notice that's the soccer field to the west, and then to the east, it says the the remainder of Southeast Quarter Section. That's gonna be for future five B and phase seven there. So we just wanted to show council kind of what, you know, what a tentative plan of subdivision looks like. Again, there's a big chunk of drawings that I haven't included in this package, but, you know, it involves civil engineering and servicing and and that kind of thing. Just continuing on with the subdivision process, it's our largest and longest process here at the town. Subdivisions can take six months to a year sometimes to get title. It's a, it's a long and lengthy process. You know, we did a subdivision application for Edgefield Phase Two in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, and we're having those housing starts this year. We're having, you know, a good year so far, and that's because of the work that we did a couple of years ago approving that subdivision. So once a subdivision is approved, the developer builds the infrastructure and and the town inherits this infrastructure through the CCC FAC process. I'm not gonna get too deep into that, but essentially, the developer builds a bunch of stuff and and the town inherits it. We're talking about service mains, roadways, sidewalks, parks, and pathways. So we have circulated the initial tentative plan for the ranch phase five, which was included a couple of slides back there. And we've received several responses regarding Park Lane Drive and the proposed through-road access. And that's why we're here today to talk about that. Summarized so far, the responses that that we've received state that a second public access is a change from the concept presented in two thousand and five. And a second public access adds to or creates problems on Park Lane Drive. Those are kind of the the responses that we've received so far to date on this application. So just in in response to those responses, you know, in response to the public access being a change to the concept presented in two thousand and five. So this was, the developer held an open house in in two thousand and five, and members of the communities came. I think it was at the Holiday Inn. You know, and that that occurred in two thousand and five, and there's a number of documents that were handed out. And, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot of concepts shown at the open house that included a cul-de-sac in the in the ranch, and that was the original idea in two thousand and five. And and since then, practices, rules, and regulations across multiple levels of government have changed and evolved. I'm just including three of them here for you today. The list would be too long to 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 state what everything that's changed. But essentially, the year after two thousand and five, there was new fire and building code in two thousand and six. We're using the current two thousand and nineteen codes. In in two thousand and eight, the City of Calgary Fire Department Access Standard was adopted, and that's one of the the primary documents that we've reviewed, used in this review so far. So that was adopted in two thousand and eight and updated in two thousand and eleven. And then the National Fire Protection Agency fourteen eleven is a two thousand and seventeen document, but it was adopted in two thousand and eight, or specifically that table that we've been using in our review was adopted in two thousand and eight. So again, we see a lot of changes from from sixteen years ago, a lot changes, you know, in in the planning and engineering world in sixteen years. And we just wanted to make that clear today, that, you know, the the rules have have changed since that two thousand and five open house. In response to public access adding to problems on Park Lane Drive, you know, we're not trying to make people unhappy. We're recommending our position, we have this position because of safety and emergency access needs and because the documents that we've reviewed all state one thing. Another point is Park Lane Drive is classified as a collector roadway, and that's a step up from just a local road. It's 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 a step up from just a local road. It's intended to to service other other roads and kind of be a throughfare. We've contacted the RCMP about crime stats and speeds, we're kind of ongoing about that. We have, we put out a traffic counter to get some more road data, and we're continuing to take public comments to on the subdivision. So I've just got a few more slides for you here, councilors. Our position so far. So there are, this is our position on the on the second public access through road onto Park Lane. Our position so far, there are two primary triggering factors for our for our position, and I'll hop back to a map here in a second. But the two primary triggering requirements are the number of households exceeds one hundred. That's coming from the National Fire Protection Agency one one four one. And the distance essentially from a a house's front door, a house's, you know, main point of access to a public access road exceeds two hundred. So let's jump back to just one of your maps here. Earlier in their in their package, there's a good map that had our area in red there that we were talking about. It's this this document here, your worship. You know, the the north end of of Ranch Gate, there, the northwest corner of of that that circled area in red is gonna be about three hundred and fifty meters, three hundred and ninety meters to the primary access point on Archie Cliver. So we're well over that requirement of of two hundred meters to, you know, and that triggers the requirement of a second public access. You'll also note that Ranch Garden and Ranch Close have ninety-two households existing today. So if they add eight more houses in that red outlined area, that's over one hundred households, and that's a triggering requirement for a second access. So those are the two triggering ones. I'm just gonna jump back to the. So this is one of my last slides, just our our position or recommendation so far. We wanted to talk about why this is so important. You know, it's so important for for a number of reasons. You know, these rules that that we review in the subdivision and development process aren't aren't written in blue or black ink. They're they're written in in blood, and especially that's true with when it comes to anything to do with fire code or National Fire Protection Agency Fire Department access. You know, those are the rules that that we don't wanna mess with. You know, and and we think that it, you know, that the second public access is important for emergency service access and and safety. If there was ever an evacuation or a natural disaster in this area and folks needed to get out of this area in the ranch, that second public access is very important. If there was ever a water main break or a gas leak, I know a couple of years, we had a state of emergency because there was a water main break in in Strathmore. These kind of things happen. You know, we need to ensure that our our residents and community members are safe and can get out of their communities if they need to. Another big risk, you know, for if we only have one public access is inclement weather, and and Strathmore is a winter community. We're seeing more and more extreme weather with with climate change. You know, some of this stuff is extreme and and hard to predict. Another important point, too, is Strathmore, we're in a small urban center with with small departments who can't be in many places at once. You know, Donna's group is out there working hard right now in operations. We can't be, you know, adding little trouble spots for them that they'll need to continue monitor and keep track of for for snow removal, et cetera. We can't be adding problems for for our smaller departments. Same with our fire department, we only have a certain number of personnel, a certain number of equipment. We can't be in many places at once. We can't be adding problems to our transportation network. And then I'll just, I'll I'll finish, you know, we aren't just thinking about five years from now or or next year or or six years from now. We're thinking about, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years in the future, when when the ranch is is completely fully built out and we have nearly six hundred people living in this community. And that that's one of the hard parts, one of the the difficult things about my job, difficult things about engineering is, you know, you're not making a decision just for today. You also need to think ahead and ensure that, you know, that the future community is gonna be set up for success, and the future community is gonna be, you know, meeting all the requirements and having all the access needs that that they need. So my last slide, just opening up with the discussion with council. We want to ask if if council have enough information on administration's position regarding the through-road connection to Park Lane Drive. If you don't, please ask us any questions. I'm here to answer any questions on behalf of planning. We have a member from the fire department who's here, we have a member from Infrastructure Engineering who's here. We can all answer your questions to make sure that council has enough information regarding our position so far on this connection or proposed connection to Park Lane Drive. We did receive an email from the developer yesterday, too, and and we would like to walk through that with council, but maybe we can do some Q and A first, whatever council would like. So I'll just open it up to to Mayor Fuel. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. I have Counselor Peterson for the first question.
That that was my first question, your worship, was to address Scott Kleinsasser's email and and just just asking you and your expertise to address that. That was my first question.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Denise Peterson. We're so, you know, we got this email yesterday from from Scott, and and, you know, the developer's been trying to come up with a a solution, we've been trying to work together to to come up with a way to handle, you know, what what can we do? How can we solve this problem? So did every, did all of members of council got that email? Yes, okay. So I'm just pulling up a couple of of images, the the two attachments in that email to Scott. He attached a couple of maps of of what they're, what they've proposed or asked us to do. If everybody can, you have those pulled up or? One map? I can pull it up on screen, I don't know if that helps. Is it, is it this one, Counselor Peter or Peterson, that you have? Okay, so I'll just speak to this one, and and it's up on my screen right now. It's it's the one that's black and white, it says ranch phase five access in the in the in the top right corner. So essentially, what they're, what Scott is asking is, you know, they're proposing two emergency accesses. So these are, emergency access is different from a from a from a public access. There's a couple of key differences. Emergency accesses are narrower at six meters versus the public access would be nine meters. Emergency accesses usually have a gate or ballers there, and you know, they they aren't open to the public, they're intended for, you know, a fire truck or emergency services personnel to come in, lower the ballards, and then be able to access. The average homeowner won't be able to go through these emergency accesses unless the ballers or gates are are open. Another important distinction about these emergency accesses is they're usually not cleared of of snow. It's, you know, they aren't prioritized anyway when when it comes to to snow clearing. You know, it's hard to to get in there and hard to, you know, make sure that ballers and everything is are clear of snow. We we focus on the the primary accesses. We still have a number of of issues with 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 Anthem's email yesterday, you know, and that's in in direct response to the to the requirements that we've looked at. The two emergency accesses, one, I'm just gonna talk about the one onto George Freeman Trail first. And we've kind of mentioned this in in an earlier discussion with council. But George Freeman Trail is identified as an arterial roadway and is part of the future Ring Road in in Strathmore. The Ring, the Ring Road, this big arterial road, we're trying to limit accesses to it. There's a couple of reasons why, and that's the the geometric design guide for Canadian roads recommends that a fifty-kilometer roadway, which is George Freeman Trail, should have a minimum of four hundred and fifteen meters between signalized intersections. The distance between Park Lane Drive and Archie Cliver, those are the two north, two nearest connections, intersections is is four hundred and fifty right now, meaning a new intersection in between those would would reduce the length of the requirement to approximately half the distance. The location for the intersection for for would also be, this emergency access would also be where the road transitions from four lanes to two lanes. An additional, you know, traffic movement at this lane reduction would potentially be a potentially be a hotspot for for accidents. And all intersections along George Freeman Trail will become signalized, adding an intersection, which will need, you know, potentially more signals to be installed, which is unideal. Staff went out to this specific spot and and reviewed whether we 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 could do this or not, and and all staff agree that, you know, we don't think it's, we don't think it's acceptable to have an emergency access on the George Freeman Trail. And then the other emergency access on the northwest side, it's still the, it's just still shown as a six-meter emergency access, which we don't think is. it it's just still shown as a six meter emergency access, which we don't think is appropriate, namely due to the City of Calgary Fire Department access standard. And those two rules of the two triggering factors that I mentioned earlier in my presentation of of being over one hundred households and and having the the doors or the houses, the doors to the houses, sorry, on the north part of Ranch Phase Five being more than two hundred weight, two hundred meters of a primary access point. So again, we still have these two triggering, two triggering requirements, two triggering problems, if if we went with the the concept that was circulating yesterday, we would still be in violation of of the rules that we that we've been looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any further questions for Chuck? Counselor Sobel?
Thank you. Just actually to Your Worship, the first one. Excuse me, as I as I understand it, the one of the main concerns is the additional traffic that this is going to allegedly cause to Park Lane Drive from the from the new residences. Somewhere in the vicinity of probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred new vehicles in the in the area. And and this is, this is, I'm not sure you can even comment on this, Chuck, but given the location of 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 the new, the new area, is it safe to surmise that most of the vehicles leaving the area would would be heading south to traffic and highway to, I'm sorry, to shopping and to Highway One? I I don't imagine there's any way we can figure this out, but I just, it just seems common sense to me that most of the vehicles would would head to the south to Archie Cliver Trail anyway. Has there been any any discussion on on that point?
Thanks, Counselor Sobel, and I was thinking the same thing. Ranch Gate could could actually take vehicles off Park Lane Drive, as you said, head south towards Archie Cliver Trail and then into the Walmart shopping area. So yeah, if you gentlemen could comment on that.
Thank you, Your Worship and Counselor Sobel. We don't have an exact number. There's there's experts out there who would have a better answer for us, but we have had internal discussions and and we're kind of, we're we're in agreement with what you're thinking is commuter traffic are likely to go south. People who are going for shopping are likely to go south. And schools are probably are fifty fifty. Some will go south, some will definitely go north. Those who are going to come to the downtown specifically, yeah, they're likely to go north. And whether they're visiting a different resident, it could go any direction. So we do believe that the majority of traffic will head south and not north towards Park Lane. And your comment, Mr. Mayor, about some people using Park Lane going south, that's definitely going to happen as well.
Thank you. Second question, Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, and and I wonder if if I if Chief, Fire Chief, Acting Fire Chief Owl would be kind enough to comment on the on the bollards and 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 access to 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 subdivisions via through 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 the bollards that that are being proposed.
Through Your Worship to Counselor Sobel, thank you for the question. Although the bollards and alternate accesses are allowed under the Calgary standard for access, they are definitely not the preferred method to access or egress. Chuck talked about the maintenance in the wintertime of these accesses. Ideally, it would be a properly constructed road, properly maintained road that creates the best access for emergency services. And at this point, I'm not the only representing, I believe, the fire department, but also fire or police and EMS as well. Antidoteally, just last winter, we had some ambulances stuck trying to get into some subdivisions. And if everyone remembers the the terrible winter storm, an ambulance actually got stuck in an intersection, blocking the intersection, and a second ambulance actually had to come from a northerly direction to gain access to a resident, which was, it was a priority medical call. So without a second access in that situation, things could have gone a lot worse. So from an emergency response perspective, a properly constructed, maintained roadway is always ideal. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, and 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 I'm sorry, Your Worship, I I have one more request, if I may. And it's just, I I'd really appreciate if ours, a C A O who's who's experienced and and quite experienced in these issues and and problems that this creates, might might make a comment as to what his opinion about about this this road is.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's no question that our subject experts within the organization support the extension of Park Lane, and we support that one hundred percent. There's no question this road needs to be built at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you much, Doug.
You, Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I I'm referencing page twenty-two in your response summary, where you talk about the second access. One of the concerns was that the second second access would add to or create problems. And I I'm recalling one of the letters that that was in our previous package related to speed and safety, and in the last two years, we've just started, this council has just started to get lots of concerns on Park Lane as as the side builds up. And 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 so you put a flashing light in, and that that really helped. So I'm wondering if the, some of the issues could be mitigated through speed limits. And because there is a major concern with soccer field, with the issues around parking, and with the addition of two hundred and fifty to three hundred additional vehicles in the area, plus the commuter traffic going through, if there has been any thought given to thinking about lowering speed limits to mitigate some of the factors.
Your Worship, through you, Counselor. So Park, or sorry, the north-south road past the soccer field, we we've assessed that, and it would qualify as a playground zone. So so that north-south road would likely be signed as thirty kilometers an hour for playground hours. Park Lane Drive, Chuck mentioned that we had a traffic counter up there. It was up for approximately a week over the past, the first kind of week of July there. And we observed traffic volumes on that road are actually less than the capacities of a local road. Never mind the fact that it's a collector road. So in terms of volume, we are way under our our abilities of that road. In terms of speed, our average speed was approximately fifty-five kilometers an hour, if I remember correctly. We did have some outliers. I I believe we had a speed over a hundred kilometers an hour, unfortunately. But we do see that in many places around town. Park Lane does have a playground zone on its west end, so that does help with speed. But where we're talking the intersection, it it may or may not make a difference at that point. The other thing which we haven't mentioned yet is, when it comes to that intersection, the developer will have to provide us with a reasoning on how it is signed. Is it a T-intersection with one stop sign or is it a T-intersection as a three-way stop? We don't have that answer, but we will be asking them to provide us with an engineering reasoning as to why it should be one or the other. So a a three-way stop would help with speed, but if that's our only reason for a three-way stop, we would look at whether it's necessary.
Would it impact on the pathway as well?
Which path, which pathway are you referencing, sorry? Sorry, which pathway are you referencing?
I'm talking about the one on the on the east access.
I don't I don't foresee any impacts on that pathway. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, but I don't foresee any at the moment.
So when we talked, my final question, Your Worship, we talk about, you know, the changes from two thousand and five, it's really legitimate. I I was at that open house, and and so so I really appreciate you thinking about those decades into the future. So if we do this, if we build this road, does this accommodate that six hundred population capacity into the future?
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. It's an excellent question, and and the answer is yes. That through road will accommodate the full buildout of the ranch. We think it's the best decision that we can make for these future homeowners that haven't, there's some houses built there right now, but we're thinking about them here today. And and staff all agree that a through road is is the best way that we can serve these residents. Thank you.
And and then conversely, the the solution proposed yesterday by the developer, would that in any way be able to address the six hundred population buildout?
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. The the concept sent by Scott and and his group yesterday, in in our opinion, would be in violation of of the the rules that we've reviewed and and wouldn't be acceptable, in my opinion. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you for that, Counselor Peterson and Chuck. So I think moving forward, will it be coming to us soon as far as a decision from council concerning Ranch Gate? Or is this to keep an eye on into the future for a later date?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, we're here today, I guess, just to make sure that that council has enough information on administration's position so that, you know, we can potentially make a decision when when we're done our review. And we just wanted to to touch base with council today and make sure that you're comfortable with us, with the direction that we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess the the next thing, moving forward to administration and to Jeff in our communications department, is just to make sure that we clearly state and spell out the reasons for that potential road of Ranch Gate. And and just, you know, if we can highlight that the standards have changed since two thousand and five, that we have to have that emergency access for that new subdivision. It has to be safe. It has to be good for snow removal. And and I think if we can do that, and we can make it so that we can share it on our own Facebook pages, that will do a lot to get the comms out to to the people who are interested. And and even some of the people who live on Park Lane Drive near Ranch Gate, they may also choose to go down Ranch Gate as opposed to continuing that Park Lane Drive. And I know I I grumbled at one point when we built a house on Maplewood Drive, and I thought, no, it wasn't Maplewood Drive, sorry, Cambridge Glen Drive, the one with the boulevard up the middle. And I said, there's so much traffic here. And one of my teaching colleagues said, you built your house on a road that ends with the word drive. So it's a connector. So think like Memorial Drive. So, you know, Park Lane Drive has been a fairly fairly busy road over the last several years. And so it's it's something that we have to protect our residents, and we have to make sure that this new subdivision is going to be safe and that we're up to the current standard. So communications will be really important. Mr. Legore?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We'll ensure that this is properly communicated out to the public.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ethan, for your ability to answer our questions so well.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Montgomery and then Counselor Corbiel.
Counselor Corbiel had her hand up first, actually. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Corbiel?
Thank you, Your Worship. No big deal either way. It didn't matter if I went first, second, or whatever. You know, things change, rules change. So I get that we've kind of progressed since two thousand and five. We don't always like the changes, but they're usually for the better of people, for safety, for all those kinds of issues. And, you know, it's something I didn't think about until the other day when I saw the proposal from the developer. And, you know, though it may pass, I think about, like, if my family or somebody was in some of those situations where an emergency happened, minutes matter, you know, and to open up a a gate or whatever, even if if you need to evacuate, say, that whole development. What is the best way? You never want to, you never want to think about those emergencies and those bad situations, but they happen. So that was my only comment after that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Corbiel. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you very much. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you very much, Chuck and Ethan, for for your work on this and for explaining this to us. Some questions that came up for me, just based on the information that you guys were exchanging with people. So I understand that the point about the the four hundred and fifty meters between signalized intersections. However, like between Archie Cliver Trail, for instance, and where the Co-op and Walmart and and Sobeys entrances, that's about two hundred meters. So are we actually going to have a a light that's about two hundred meters away from that intersection as well?
Your Worship, through the chair, and Counselor Montgomery. The the TAC guideline, I I mean, of course, is a guideline, and the priority at this time is Park Lane Drive. So an intersection at Archie Cliver Trail and George Freeman Trail is probably lower down in our list of requirements. But I would say if traffic counts necessitate a a signal there, we would, even though the guidelines would be adjusted.
Okay, thank you. And and I would, I would actually be interested to know, I guess, the the number of trips per, like, yeah, like what the what the capacity is of Park Lane Drive, what the the current uses of Park Lane Drive. I'm imagining, like, as Edgefield gets built out as well, that's going to increase the amount of traffic that's on Park Lane. So I I'd be interested, I guess, just to know, like, what the 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 background is of of the capacity of the road versus like what it's what it's kind of projected to be if it does, all these areas get built out, let's say. And the other thing. So you mentioned that, and so like, I I was kind of imagining, like, you know, I think it was one of the residents mentioned something about a a right-in, right-out on George Freeman. And that obviously, like, that wouldn't have to be signalized. Is that correct?
Your Worship, that that is correct, but it does go along with our concern of putting additional traffic movements at a location where we already have a road that splits from two lanes to four lanes.
And yeah, thanks for actually for for phrasing it that way, because it does go from two to four lanes rather than from four to, like, it goes basically on that side of the road, you know, on the west side, it goes from one lane to two lanes at that point. So to, you know, the way, when I looked at it, it looked like we could just basically extend, you know, where it goes from one to two. If we extended the two back farther, that would add, you know, the space to put a right-in, right-out without without, you know, in theory, we wouldn't be, you know, reducing the amount of of capacity there. We would just be kind of shifting back where it goes from one to two lanes. Is is that something you guys looked at?
Your Worship, yes, we did. We did look at that. I I think based on the topography of the area and as well as the traffic concerns, we we still don't think it's the best solution.
Could could you elaborate, like, on on why that, why that is exactly? And I got, I'm just, like, in my head, it looks like it works. I'm just curious as to why it wouldn't work.
Your Worship, it's, there's multiple factors to this. Like I mentioned, the topography in that area, that there's actually a pretty significant ditch depth. So we're not sure where the actual height of the roadway within the community would be in in relation to George Freeman Trail. So there there may be a hill there. The next thing is, is that, of course, the right-in, right-out and the traffic movements that go along with it. The third thing is, is we've got to take into account the widening of George Freeman Trail in the future. Although it's two lanes now, the the traffic, Transportation Master Plan intends to change that to four, which would then mean higher traffic volumes, increased likelihood of an accident, among other things. And then if we did a right-in, right-out, we would then need an additional width within our right-ofway to accommodate that, once we are at that four-lane width. So there there are multiple factors, and I understand that today it possibly could work, but we are trying to take into account the future and and the condition that it would be then. Thank you.
Okay, and like, like, as far as the right-ofway goes, like, does the right-ofway allow for expansion towards the west? Or is it gonna, once you go to, like, four lanes, or is that gonna have to go mainly to the east?
Your Worship, we do have some of the right-ofway dedicated on the east through the Edgefield development, but the remaining right-ofway would be dedicated through the subdivision process of the next phase of the ranch, not this current phase.
Okay. And and cost-wise, I mean, this is, I guess, new, but cost-wise, like, would we be paying for the the roadwork to put a an intersection on George Freeman, or would that be the developer's cost?
Your Worship, through the chair, the the cost initially would come from the developer. But when it comes to upgrades, maintenance, that sort of thing, we would bear the costs as the town.
Okay. I think that's that's all my questions. So yeah, so if you guys could possibly, if you guys could provide, like, just some data on the the current use of the road, the future capacity, what you think the capacity, or like, what you think the the usage will be. You know, once it's, like, once all those areas are built out, let's say, I'd just be, I'd be curious to know, because I, as I said, I'm I'm kind of picturing people from Edgefield, you know, using that road as well. So I would like to know just kind of what's, what we're expecting and and what the transportation master plan speaks to as well. So I would like to know just kind of what's what we're expecting and what the transportation master plan speaks to as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Thank you, Ethan and Chuck. And that brings us to eight point two. Are we still doing this one? Eight point two handy bus update. Administration.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report out that myself and Nell T D met with representatives of the Handy Bus Association on Monday morning, and we have an amended MOU, which we'll be bringing to council on July twenty first. And representatives of the Handy Bus Association will be in attendance to speak to it or answer any question that council has. It was a very good meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing further to report.
Thank you. Any questions for the administration? Any comments? Counselor Sobel?
Bob, you're on mute. Sorry, Counselor Sobel, you're on mute.
Thank you, Counselor Corbile. Your worship, I just like to make note of a letter that was received in on June twenty eighth, or it was written on June twenty eighth by the Strathmore Handy Bus. And and basically, the the letter makes reference, well, I'll read that, you know what, it's a short letter and I'll just read it and and then explain why I'm bringing this up. The Strathmore Handy Bus would like to express, and this is written to Counselor Montgomery, would like to express our gratitude for the time and involvement you have given to the association for the past several years. However, the board members feel that at present, there is a conflict of interest issue, as you are a representative for the town of Strathmore. The association has not received any funding from the town, and there is no MOU agreement. When the town of Strathmore canceled the MOU, your representation in the Strathmore Handy Bus was canceled. At present, the association is not under any obligation to reveal our financial document with you or the town of Strathmore. The board has agreed by motion that you may be, that you be removed from the board immediately. We thank you again for your years as representative of the town. So as we're aware, effective February first of this year, the Strathmore Handy Bus changed their structure and became an organization under the sole control of the Strathmore Handy Bus Board of Directors. That change resulted in an end that memorandum of understanding between the association and the town. Frankly, this should have signaled the end of council representation on their board of directors. However, that formal request was not made until last month. Since that time, Counselor Montgomery has been reluctant to resign his position as council's representative for the Handy Bus Association. Although I question the need for a motion to remove him from that position in view of the letters sent by the Handy Bus Board, Counselor Montgomery has insisted that he would step down only with a motion in place. And as such, your worship, I'll be prepared to make a motion to that effect once we come out of committee.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Did you have a comment?
Well, I just had a question for administration, but I guess I can, I can just kind of touch on what Counselor Sobel has mentioned. Yeah, it just seemed, it seemed premature before we actually hear from, you know, what direction the Handy Bus Association wants to go, you know, to remove a council representative. It's kind of moot, because, I mean, like, without, you know, the town having a spot on the board, you know, it doesn't matter whether or not we have a representative or not. So it, that's why it didn't seem like there was any point in removing the council representative until we figure out what direction they want to go. My question for administration, well, so something that I guess is worth mentioning is that, so since, well, and I guess I'll provide some background. So prior to February, when the Handy Bus Association decided to well, I'll back, sorry, I'll back up even more. So prior to February, the Handy Bus essentially hired the town to provide drivers and to provide management for the Handy Bus Association. So the Handy Bus Association was an independent board, and they were basically a governance board. And so after February, they took over the control of the operations of the board and and became more of an operational board. And so my question for administration is whether or not I, since that time, I've kind of, I've kind of taken more of a hands off approach. Like, I was the president of the association for a couple of years, and I was the vice president for a year as well. But once it was made clear they wanted to separate, I took a step back. And I was wondering about whether it's even appropriate to have a counselor on an operational board, or if there's some liability involved that the town should be worried about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legore.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, with the Handy Bus Association separating from the town as of February first. Really, council has no appointment to that board any longer at that point. They're a completely independent nonprofit association. When we bring the new MOU forward on July twenty first, there will be a change in structure. But I, I want to wait till I get confirmation from the Handy Bus as to the draft MOU before I comment on that. We'll be presenting it at that time. And it will address as to whether or not the town will have representation on the board at that time. But in the meantime, from February first up until we get a new MOU, there is no representation from the town to the Handy Bus Association. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Follow up question, or are you okay, Counselor Montgomery?
And I understand Mr. Legore is not a, he's not a lawyer, but is is he under the impression that there is in general, let's say, you know, I understand that, for instance, like with the the Strathmore Urbanize Shelter, they became more of an operational board. And at that point, you know, it wasn't appropriate to have a council representative. So I'm just wondering if if it's, if there's a liability issue with council being on an operational board.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The town would have to appoint someone to be on the Handy Bus Board if they so requested subsequent to February first. No such request was made. I'm not prepared to comment whether there would be a liability in part of the town. I think I would have to consult legal counsel on that question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Corbile?
Thank you, worship. I have a quick question from administration. Would it be appropriate to wait till the, till the next meeting with the MOU to continue with this motion or whatever? Right now, I think administration and the Handy Bus Board are working together with this MOU, and I have faith in in that. Should we, is it a little premature to do this one yet, or what does it mean? I guess, think, or what is their suggestion?
Just as a recap, at this point, the Handy Bus Association has totally broken away from the town. And since there's not an official MOU adopted, they are requesting that there be no elected representative on their board, I believe is where we're at now. I don't know what the new MOU might say, but at this point, they do not want to have an elected member on their board. That's, I think, where we are now. But, Mr. Legore?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. And as of the separation, as of February first, technically and legally, we have no appointment to that board. There is no longer an appointment from the town to the Handy Bus Board, because they are no longer connected to the town. They're a totally independent nonprofit association. And like any other group in the town, whether it be Lions Club or somebody else, we have no representation on them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does that help, Counselor Corbile?
Yes and no. I get that it's a separate organization, but it's one that we actually contribute to. And I guess we're not contributing yet. So is that where we're left, I guess?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If the town was contributing funds to the Handy Bus Association, that would be have to be done through an MOU. And at that time, we would address as to whether or not there is membership in the Handy Bus Association.
So in essence, we're honoring their wishes now. They don't want to have an elected representative on their board now. I don't know what the MOU is going to say yet. They're still talking about it, I guess. Counselor Sobel?
Yeah, your worship, I agree totally with Counselor Montgomery that that the motion is a fairly moot point. And it has been since February, when when they broke from the the town. However, we've just spent a week with numerous emails going back and forth with Counselor Montgomery insisting that he be present at any meeting with the with the Handy Bus Board and insisting that he remain the representative of council when dealing with the Handy Bus, which is quite improper. And and that is the reason why I want to make this motion, to make it clear that at at Counselor Montgomery's insistence and request that that he would only step down from the, from being our representative with a motion. And that is the proper, proper direction right now. We have no representation with the the Handy Bus Board. They are a separate organization, and we are not part of that organization. And I just want to make the motion so that it's clear to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And this will be coming up. You're going to bring forward a motion when we go back to the public meeting?
Please, yes.
Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I guess. So first of all, regardless of the fact that the MOU was you know, rescinded or canceled. At that point, council didn't, I saw, and again, yeah, the the Handy Bus Association is an independent board, much like the library boards. Well, actually, I guess we appoint them. They are an independent board, and they do have, you know, the county, for instance, is a member on there. And I believe in by their bylaws, they allow for space for a town representative and a county representative. I've been representing the town at meetings with the Handy Bus Board. I've been, you know, bringing, acting as a liaison between the Handy Bus Board and and the town since February. And at no time in between now and then has anybody, you know, said, hey, it's it's not appropriate for you to be representing the town. And in fact, I was appointed during the organizational meeting last October. And and it is true, until I'm, until that organizational meeting decision, where we're all appointed to certain committees and boards, until that's voted to be changed. I am the the town's representative dealing with the Handy Bus Association, regardless of whether it's an MOU or not. The town, according to the letter, as was kind of mentioned, was removed from the board because of the fact that there was money not being given and the fact that there was not an MOU that had been kind of provided up until late May, essentially. And so, and it is true, I did ask, you know, I even, I'll use the word insist. I insisted that I be included in any in further meetings, because I was concerned that that proper attention, you know, might not be given to it. There's been times where I've regretted not keeping a close enough eye on, you know, various things that have gone on, that afterwards I've said, oh, you know, I wish I had, I wish I kind of kept a closer eye on it. And, you know, I brought, I forwarded council an email April first from the Handy Bus Association, where they asked about, they said, well, you know, we're not getting any money since January, and also, we haven't got an MOU. I forwarded that to our administration as as the liaison between administration and and the Handy Bus Association. And and at that time, I, you know, I, I was told it would be handled. And and the town was removed from the Handy Bus Board because that was not actually handled. So once I became aware of the fact that that had not been handled appropriately, I did begin to insist that I be included in any other meetings. And that's the reason why, yes, it's true. I said that I, until I'm removed as the Handy Bus appointed representative of council, I should be included in any meetings. And that is true. It's, it's, I believe, it makes sense that the the council representative for the town of Strathmore to the Handy Bus Association be included or at least kept apprised of anything that goes on between the Handy Bus Association and administration. But at the same time, I, you know what, as I said, it's moot. I, you know, I'm not insisting I go to board meetings. They are an independent organization, and they can have whoever they want on the board. I was insisting that I be included in between meetings between administration and the Handy Bus Association or the Handy Bus President. That's, that's it. And that's the reason why. So, but, you know, it sounds like it's being handled this time. And, you know, I look forward, I guess, to seeing the results of what comes forward. And that's, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sobel, did you have anything else? Your hand is up now?
Just, just very quickly, you know, just, to be honest here, the June twenty eighth letter doesn't remove the town. It removes Counselor Montgomery as a board member, period. That's pretty clear as to what it says, and that's, that's the reason for the motion. Thank you, your worship. That's all I have.
Thank you. We move on to the Calgary Kart Racing.
Sorry, Murfield, if you don't mind, I just wanted to read a section from this letter, just to make sure everything's clear. It says, "The board members feel that at present, there is a conflict of interest issue, as you are a representative of the town of Strathmore, and the association has not received any funding from the town, and there was no MOU." They did express their gratitude for the time and involvement I've given. And and again, they thanked me for my years as a representative. So between this letter and the emails that we've received, I don't think it's kind of appropriate to paint it as me being removed personally. I was removed personally, but only because I'm a representative of the town. Otherwise, I'm pretty sure I'd probably still be on there, but it's, you know, it's, it is what it is, I guess, so.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery, for clarification. Counselor Peterson, sorry.
I apologize, Jeff. So, so there is confusion for me here around whether or not we have representation on the Handy Bus Board. And and my my concern, you know, is is really, you know, focusing on the services presented by the Handy Bus to the community. They've clearly said the town of Strathmore canceled the MOU. Understand that. It says, your representation with the Handy Bus is canceled. If I'm correct, your worship, our administration has said that we do not have representation now on the Handy Bus. That might change in the future. So I'm unclear where we stand.
Well, I think what's what's going on is there has been discussion. I think they had a recent meeting with administration in Alice Booth. And they're going to discuss the potential MOU. She's coming to us on the twenty first. So there may be another another form of this cooperation and participation.
So my my second and subsequent question, your worship, for the, for the sake of community. I heard our administration say we had a very good meeting. And I really, I trust that. And the former representative was not present. So, but then I heard the former representative say that the town did not handle the situation appropriately. So I guess I would like to know what 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 that means.
I think we're going to hear more on July twenty first. That's my understanding from what was said this morning.
I guess my concern is, is if we're bringing a motion forward on a moot point, why would we do that, your worship? I just, I don't understand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It would be appropriate to ask the question of the Handy Bus Association on July twenty first, if the relationship between the town and the Handy Bus Association is broken or affected in any way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there still confusion? I think Counselor Corbile, you're also confused. Are you not? And I want to make sure we all know what's going on.
I actually just have a quick question. Does, does the county have a representative on the Handy Bus Board?
Yes, I believe they do, but they don't contribute as much money, close to as much money as the town of Strathmore does. But they do have a representative on the board. I don't know what, I don't know what, maybe Jason knows, Counselor Montgomery, sorry. Do you know if Wheatland County was also informed of this kind of a thing that we were informed of?
That's what I, that's exactly where I was going.
But like, as in, like, were they removed, or were they just notified?
They also asked the Wheatland County Counselor to step down as well?
Well, no, so Wheatland County provides ten thousand dollars per year. And then they also, at this point, they've also leased office space to the association. So I guess the difference, you know, as much as we used to give Um, so I guess the difference, you know, as much as we used to give, you know, a lot of money, a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. Um, you know, I guess since the MOU, we haven't contributed any, any money. So that's, I guess, what separates us from uh, the county is that the county has continued to give funding, whereas we ended funding.
So, uh, sorry, Counsel Corville. Counselor Montgomery, if I could just ask, you're saying that they do a lot of in-kind services as, in addition to what they pay?
Uh, not a lot. Um, so they have reduced funding overall, I would say. Like, they were giving thirty-five thousand a year. They cut that down to ten. Uh, they did lease office space for basically a dollar per year. Um, and then they also do uh, what are called CVIP, uh, which is a, a type of vehicle inspection, a commercial vehicle inspection. Uh, they provide those in kind, but that's, I mean, like, you know, twelve hundred dollars or something like that per year.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Montgomery. That clears up a lot of it for me. Uh, Counselor Corville, do you, are you understanding? To me, and I, I don't want to make light of this or downplay it, but to me, it's right now, we're in kind of a housekeeping situation. They don't want a counselor representative on their board because they're independent. There's no MOU at this time and no funding at this time. So we're fulfilling their request. And then as they work through the MOU again, and it comes forward and uh, Alice Booth comes to us, then we'll see if they want council representation, what form it might take, or maybe they continue to not want uh, any counselor on the committee. And then we have to look at how we feel about that, considering we pay quite a bit of money into that board. So it's, it's get, I, I think we have to do one thing to get it off the table. And then we revisit it when we know more about the MOU and the funding formula. Does that make sense, Counsel Peterson? Does that make sense? Counsel Montgomery and Cor- Corville, Counsel Corville, you're okay? Okay. All right. We'll move on now to the Calgary Kart Racing Club, and Jeff Person is here.
Thank you very much, your worship. Uh, and uh, good morning, council. Uh, this is a very simple one. Uh, the, the town has a lease in place with the Calgary Kart Racing Club. Uh, part of that lease specifies that uh, uh, if they deviate from the, the use of the land specified under section one point one F, that uh, it would require uh, permission from the, from the, uh, from the town. So uh, so I'm here today just seeking approval for a request from the Calgary Kart Racing Club to allow for a beer garden on their event grounds during July twenty second to twenty fifth this year.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions, uh, Counsel Peterson for Jeff?
Worship, I just ready with the motion?
Uh, we need to go in public for that, so.
Oh, that's right, sorry, we have.
If there's any questions uh, of Jeff, before we do that, when we go from committee of the whole to the public portion, then we can have a motion and uh, vote on it. Seeing no questions, uh, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to come out of committee of the whole. Counsel Corville?
I move to come out of committee of the whole.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor? And we are now out of committee of the whole, so we're in the public portion. And if people are watching at home, uh, when we go into the public portion of a meeting, that's the only time we can make motions and vote. So we needed to leave committee of the whole to go into what's called a public uh, meeting. So, uh, is there a motion on the floor? Counsel Peterson has one regarding the Calgary Kart Racing Club.
Thank you, your worship. So I would move the council approver request of the Calgary Kart Racing Club to allow for a beer garden on their event grounds during the July twenty second to twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one event.
And now that we have a motion on the floor, did you want to speak to it, or are there?
No, your worship, I just, I wish them the best. And, and uh, I am, I'm really pleased to see that uh, that um, they've had their, their five-year lease, uh, that, that there's been an extension. And that the adjacent landowners uh, have not brought forth any concerns around this group. And they've, um, they've really been a, a good addition. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Any other discussion points on the Kart Racing Club motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? And that motion is carried. Thank you, Jeff. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, your worship. Further to eight point two of our agenda for today, I'd move that Counselor Montgomery be removed as council's representative in all matters dealing with the Strathmore Handy Bus.
Thank you. And now that we have a motion on the floor, is there discussion, Counselor Montgomery?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I'm just wondering, given that I'm uh, the, let's, I, I'm easily probably the most familiar person in the organization with the Handy Bus Association. I'm wondering what the reason would be for removing me from uh, uh, being uh, a representative or uh, acting as liaison with the association.
Counselor Sobel, did you want to address that?
They don't want you on their board, and they don't want you as their representative. They.
Well, they didn't say, they didn't say that, Counsel Sobel. They removed the town, okay?
That's, that's motion, your, your worship.
I think, basically, as the, I think if we can just keep this clean and black and white and motionless, it's, it's basically since you are the counselor uh, representative on their board, and since they've broken away from us entirely, there is no MOU. At this time, the funds are still being worked out. So at this time, they don't want a counselor representative. And it happens to be you. So my understanding then is the motion is to remove you to fulfill their request that there be no counselor representative. So if that.
Well, so, so as I said, they're an independent board, and all they had to do was vote to remove the town from the uh, from the board, which they did. Um, my question is, uh, given that I'm the most familiar with the organization, uh, within the town organization, uh, wouldn't it be uh, prudent to have me involved with, uh, you know, like, like discussions with the MOU or to be, uh, you know, providing, uh, you know, information uh, to administration to act. I, I am council's representative. I'm not the, I'm not the association's representative. I am council's representative. Uh, and um, and I'm not insisting, again, I'm not insisting I be included in board meetings. That's, you know, that's totally their prerogative to not have a council member there. Um, I'm wondering why we would uh, not have me involved in uh, you know, as we're, as we're putting together a new MOU, as we're looking at, like, as I said, I'm the most familiar person with the organization.
Well, I, I'm assuming if, if they do decide to have a counselor rep at a future time, then again, we can revisit that as far as a motion and a vote. But at this time, to me, it just appears that we're honoring their request for no council representative. There are still ongoing negotiations. I don't know what form our association uh, with this board is going to be. So I think that's where we're at right now as far as the motion on the floor. Counselor Corville?
Thank you, worship. You know, with this organization, it is, like, I, I, I get Counsel Montgomery, you are the most familiar with it. But moving forward, like with the MOUs, I think that is our administration. You know, with Doug and, and Alice Booth, I, I hope that, you know, with meeting one going well, I hope that they can find their common ground. Uh, you know, I think we start from, from scratch, basically, with this organization. I really do hope that we do. I, I wouldn't be comfortable having and giving the Handy Bus money without representation. And that doesn't mean voting, that just means being included in, in this um, committee. But moving forward, this committee is going to look a whole lot different in regards to the town. Good, bad, whatever, it is kind of what it is. Um, and if this is a housekeeping thing, I would have no issues appointing you next week with our MOU. I uh, I don't know what else to say. I don't, it's really hard. I don't, this is not a, I don't think that this is a personal thing. Ask, with the, with the Handy Bus asking for council to be removed, I don't think that that is against you. I don't think that that is a personal attack against you at all. I think that that is just a way for, for them to um, move forward and, and get an MOU done with the town. I, I don't know why it's taken this long, but we are where we are. And for our residents, I think that this needs to get done ASAP.
Um, yeah, if I, if I could respond, I'm certainly not arguing about being, again, being involved with the uh, the association. They've, they've spoken. I, I'm talking about internally, within the town. Uh, I'm the most knowledgeable person about the Handy Bus. Uh, so I'm wondering why the council would not want me to be working with administration to put together a good MOU that uh, will be realistic and will uh, will kind of cover the needs of the community. Um, I, I, again, totally separate from the organization or the association. I'm wondering about internally within the town, why it makes sense to remove me from the file.
Well.
May, may I respond to that?
Sure, Counsel Corville.
Thank you. You know, when, this MOU is not going to be done outside of council. This will come back to us. And don't think that I won't look to you for suggestions. But I think that administration, this is the, the operational thing, where they have to get together with the Handy Bus. And I think the Handy Bus will have specific requests for the town. So when it comes to us next week, yeah, I will definitely look forward to your input during the public meeting.
Thank you very much. And yeah, yeah, like, you know what? I, I'm actually planning on voting for this uh, this motion, because I mean, like, it's uh, it's, it's, it's not a, a problem for me. Uh, I just, yeah, it's, uh, I just want a clarification on, on it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Corville and Counsel Montgomery. So uh, is there any further discussion on this, on this motion? Seeing none, then I'll call the question, all in favor. And the motion is carried. And then we look forward to administration and uh, the Handy Bus coming to us next week to discuss the new um, the new approach, I guess, the new MOU and where we might be headed. Uh, we have no urgent business, uh, administrative inquiries? None? Then at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera. Oh?
Yeah, I have, so, um, I received a, a letter in my mailbox, and I'm assuming all council received from Mrs. Vivian McCallum over dandelions. And I, I'm just wondering if administration has this letter, and if they, if they could refer it to, to operations.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Who's the letter from, sorry?
It's from Mrs. Vivian McCallum. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you missed that at home, uh, operations has received the letter about the dandelions, and they will be responding. And at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera. We have a motion to go in camera at uh, ten twenty-five, all in favors? And we are now going in camera. Okay, so welcome back to the public portion. We are uh, recording this meeting as usual. And uh, Counselor Corville?
It's, it's me, I think.
I move that the council accept the offer of purchase from Six Sica Office of Affordable Housing dated July eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize a CIO to sign the contract for the sale of lots three and four located at six eight zero West Chester Road, Strathmore.
Thank you for your motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And the motion is carried. And now we're looking for a motion. We have a motion to adjourn at ten thirty-one, all in favor? And we are adjourned. Take care, everybody.